Okay. You got the other ones in?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thanks Denise. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission here in the city of Temecula. Call to order. Please join Commissioner Bob Hegel as he leads us in the flag salute.
Hand over your heart. Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hegel. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Here.
And Chairperson Watts.
Here.
And we have one excused absence from Commissioner Telesio.
Thank you very much. Public comment, the next item on our agenda tonight. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to the Planning Commission at temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. So far tonight, we have one request for a public comment. If anybody else desires to have a public comment, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to our secretary before we move on to the next item. Our first, our only speaker so far, Mr. Gary Odie, Adi? Adi. I should know that, but, sorry.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair Watson. My name is Mike.
Okay, that's, hello. Thanks for having me. I am a resident here for over thirty years in Temecula, going around to all the commissions this summer and introducing Bike Temecula Valley, which is a cycling advocacy group, an active transportation advocacy group. Bike Temecula Valley is engaged in an inclusive, an engaged and inclusive coalition of cyclists dedicated to advocating for a safe, fun, and accessible network of cycling infrastructure that promotes human-powered recreation and transportation. We support the work of the Planning Commission in the past on approving projects like Summersbend, for example, where infrastructure is geared toward moving people actively and safely. Our hope is that you will continue to consider the positive impact projects like Summersbend has on the quality of life in our community. We believe that a good active transportation network addresses health concerns, increases physical activity, improves safety, reduces human exposure and to transportation-related emissions, reduces motor vehicle-related injuries and fatalities, reduces transportation's contribution to air pollution, and ultimately boosts local economics. As stated by members of the Blue Ribbon Committee, let's move people, not cars. I would like to, tonight, just leave you with a thought on future projects to keep in mind of the Department of Transportation's suggestions for complete streets. So when we are doing projects that streets do look like those streets in Summersbend, where we consider walkers, cyclists, mobility chairs, as well as moving cars swiftly and efficiently. So, thank you for the time tonight, and hope to see you again, and good luck this evening.
Thank you, Gary. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action, and I have not heard of any requests yet. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. And tonight, the only item on our consent calendar is the minutes from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Would anybody care to make a motion on those?
I'll move the item.
Commissioner Ruiz has moved it. Do we have a second? Commissioner Turley Trejo with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's four aye votes. So four zero on that item. Next item is business. Members, excuse me, members of the public may address the commission on business items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. I may have this memorized by one or two more meetings, but our business item tonight is long-range project number LR22-0738, a general plan consistency review for an amendment to the fiscal years 2023-27 capital improvement program. And Mark Collins will make a staff presentation, I believe, on this item?
Yes, sir. Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Today I'll be presenting to you an amendment to the current capital improvement program fiscal year 2023 through 2027. A little background, Section 65403 of state law requires that the Planning Commission review and provide comments to the city council regarding conformity of the capital improvement program with the adopted general plan. And Planning Commission's role is to review the capital improvement program and determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan. Forgive me. On May eighteenth, 2022, the Planning Commission passed a resolution and made a finding of consistency with the general plan for the draft years 2023-2027 CIP budget sheets consisting of thirty circulation projects, fifty-two infrastructure projects, twenty park and recreation projects, and three Sarda housing projects. Today we'll be introducing one new proposed project, and it is the Mary Phillips Senior Center Outdoor Recreation Area, to include the design and construction of a multi-use outdoor recreational area and replacement of the HVAC units with high-efficiency units. General Plan Consistency, staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that this project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan under the open space and conservation element, as well as the growth management and public facilities element. Staff recommendations that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution making a finding of consistency with the general plan for the amendment to the current fiscal year 2023-2027 capital improvement program budget, and make a finding of exemption under Sections 15061B3 and 15378B4 of the California Environmental Quality Act. This completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Just, I did ask previously if we had any speakers on this item, and I just want to make sure that we do not.
We do not.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, do we have any questions of staff? Commissioner Turley Trejo.
So what exactly are they putting in there for the recreation for them? Is it just what we saw, kind of on the?
It is going to be a multi-use court, primarily to have activities outdoor. In the wake of COVID, we want to have the ability to have the senior center open when indoor activities are no longer allowed.
Has there been any talk of putting a pickleball court there?
Yes, there has. There has.
And?
It's not that big, so you could barely.
Doesn't have to be very big for a pickleball court.
Yeah, we looked at it, and you could only get a, barely one court there.
For the whole thing?
For the whole thing.
They would be, they would be so happy. They would be so happy.
Well, this is a multi-use court, so.
All right, just putting my two cents in for pickleball.
Understood.
All right.
Any other questions of staff? None here either. Anybody care to make a motion?
I will move the item.
I'll second it.
Item was moved by Commissioner Turley Trejo, seconded by Commissioner Hegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's four to zero vote in favor. We now move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. I think we have two public hearings tonight. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number three on our agenda item is planning application number PA21-0987, a development plan to construct an approximately six thousand two hundred and forty square foot express car wash. The project is located at 26478 Inez Road, and Mr. Eric Jones will be making a staff presentation on this item. Eric?
Thank you. Planning application PA21-0987 is a development plan application to construct an approximately sixty-two hundred square foot express car wash. The project is located within the promenade mall area in the red boxed area you see before you. The existing structure that used to be a restaurant will be demolished in order to allow for the project if it's approved. The proposed use of a car wash is actually defined in the specific plan as a permitted use, so it does not require any type of conditional use permit. It's flat-out permitted, provided they meet all the development standards and other requirements. First we'll discuss the site plan. Access to the site will be on the north, north side of the property, and from that, people will be directed directly into the queuing lanes, which will allow up to twenty-one vehicles. That drive aisle, after you get to the queuing lane, will bring you into the tunnel, and then when they come out of the tunnel, they can either leave the site or they can go to the vacuum area. The vacuum area has thirty spaces, actually fifteen spaces are all that are required for parking, so they've exceeded that. Let's take a look now at how this all functions, what I, what I just described. So here's how you enter the actual site, and you can see it'll bring you to the queuing lanes, and again, this will hold up to twenty-one vehicles. They follow through that driveline. This right here is an emergency access point. If they, for whatever reason, decide they can't fit in the tunnel or they need to get out for some reason, they can come out this way. They then exit the tunnel, and then they can move into this vacuum area and then leave the site when they're done. Now, before we really get into the architecture, I'd like to just show kind of the evolution of the project and show you what was with the first submittal. This right here is the first submittal that we had. You can see the different elevations here, the east elevation, west elevation, it's just much more industrial-looking. South elevation, the south elevation is where you enter the tunnel, the north is where you come out. After working with the applicant, they decided to go now with a Spanish colonial revival style, and I've listed some of the elements that are indicative of that style that you'll see on the elevations here in just a moment, so let's, let's take a look at those now. So here we have the east elevation. This is what you would see if you're drying off your car, looking at the building, this is what you'd see. The west elevation, this is the opposite side of the building, obviously. We have the south elevation, which is the entrance into the tunnel. And the north elevation, this is your, your exit. They also provide a few photo sims for us to take a look at, so here we have that east elevation again, and then this is the backside, the west elevation. From a landscaping perspective, the applicant using a variety of plant materials, I've listed a few of them here, let's take a look at the landscape plan. Pay particular attention along the ring road, we've got a lot of shrubs and even some trees in here and different bushes to help shield those, those drive aisles, excuse me, those queuing lanes to the project. From a sequel perspective, the project is categorically exempt under Section 15332, Class 32, as it's considered an infill development project. And based upon the information just presented, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the project based upon required findings and the draft conditions of approval. This concludes our presentation. I'm available for questions. We have the applicant in the audience, if you'd like to chat with him as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and first thing is we'll make sure there's no questions of you from our commission members. I'll start with Commissioner Ruiz.
Yeah, thank you. So just one, am I, first thought when I, when I saw this item, water's such a big hot topic right now, is there any restrictions or limitations based on water budgets or anything like that for a car wash coming in?
Sure, well, part of the review process is this gets routed over to Rancho Water, it gets routed over to MWD, and they provide a will serve letters, so it's, it's able to be serviced and function as proposed.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Can you go back to the site plan slide, please? And by the way, big improvement.
Wow, thank you.
On what they presented to begin with. So, can you tell me where the north promenade? Is that on the, on the right of this or the left?
The mall's right up here. What do you mean promenade? You talking?
I don't see your arrow.
Oh, sorry.
See, you see where it says Ring Road?
Yeah.
That's the road that encircles the mall.
Right.
So it's above the site on the screen.
Yeah. Okay, so.
It's near.
So Inez is here at the bottom.
Roughly. This is near the corner of Winchester.
Yeah, I know where it is. I just went out there. Yeah, I know where it is, but I'm just trying to get the, I'm just trying to see where they come in. So they come in on?
They come in right, see where, okay, right where it says Ring Road, you look down, you go to the left, you see that kind of shaded area? That's your drive aisle in.
So, yeah, so over here to the right is where Costco is. I'm just trying to get my bearings.
Far to the right, yes.
Okay, far to the right is where Costco is. So they're actually coming in on the far side of it is where the entrance is to the car wash.
They're coming in on the left.
Because there's an entrance on the other side.
There is, there's one over here.
But they're not coming in that, they're coming in the other entrance.
Other entrance.
Okay. And coming out, and then where are they going out?
They have three options to, to get out. I'm sorry you can't see my cursor, but.
I can't see your cursor. I do not know where they're going. Okay, all right.
Okay. So they're, they're coming out, okay, you see the, the line of cars there at the bottom of the tunnel?
Yeah.
And you pop out there, you can either come out, you can turn left and get out, so you'd be going down, see the little arrow right there going down? You can turn right out of the tunnel and then make an immediate left again, and there's another exit right there.
Okay, I see that. And then, okay, so when they exit, are they actually exiting in, I mean, like, there's like a parking area there where other things are? That's, they're not actually exiting like onto Inez?
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
Nope.
And then, my other question was, and I'm thinking it's far enough away, but because of all the traffic going into Costco, right, that their entrance is actually promenade north, which is the next street over, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The Costco is much farther.
Right.
To the south.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just trying to get my bearings on that.
Very good. No questions, none for me either. Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have none.
I will close the public hearing and discussion or, and/or a motion. Commissioner Hegel.
I love the design, I think, both in the way of the entry, allowing for twenty-one cars to line up, that you won't have any chance of cars out on the ring road, which I think is perfect. The number of parking spaces, the number of vacuum stations, again, you know, people going into vacuum stations are there ten to twenty minutes, or if you've got a really dirty car, thirty minutes. So there's, I don't see an accumulation of a lot of cars there over any kind of length of time, so I don't think it'll have any negative impact on traffic. The building, I think, is really nicely done. I think it fits in there well. I don't think it stands out like a sore thumb by any means. I think it just fits in beautifully, and the way you did the landscaping, or the way they did the landscaping, I think is, is perfect, so I really, really like the way this was done.
Thank you, Commissioner Hegel, Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Oh, you go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and, you know, driving over there, it's like gay, right? To put something in there that looks nice, because what's there is, does not look nice right now, so. Yeah, my only concern was, like, all the traffic from Costco, right? But it seems like that's far enough away.
Correct.
That, that won't be part of that at all, so, and, and it looks great, the improvements fit a lot better for that area.
They did a nice job.
Yeah, it's good.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, we would like the applicant to step up and address us, please?
If we can just reopen the public hearing, if we're going to hear from the applicant.
Okay, reopen the public hearing. I'm sorry, I neglected to do that before.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the member of commission. My name is Hannibal Petrosi. I'm applicant and architect for the project. Before anything, I really like to compliment our planning department and all the staff, different departments, engineering, especially Eric, that he worked throughout with us, you know, it's been a long time, but it was well worth of, you know, spending time, changing things, coming to the standard of the city. We try to bring very high standard, you know, to what we know City of Temecula is looking for. So that's said, he presented the project, you know, very well. What we have, what I can add to it is, the project will have fully solar, even on vacuum area where we have the canopies, it would be all solar, and also it will have solar panels on top of the roof, where would be very sufficient for our electrical, you know, power uses for all those dirty vacuums and also the machinery that we have in. So the building would be, I can say, there is not hundred percent, every time I say ninety percent, it comes to maybe eighty-five, ninety-five percent, would be a green type of building. We would have recycling water in here, that, separate tanks from what is WQMP, you know, we're providing. So we're very excited to be in the city, and we can't wait, you know, and looking forward to break the ground. So if any question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Do you know, can, can you actually use reclaimed water?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
And I gather there's a feed into the mall that, that you can use, then?
Yes, we would use, we're, we're in contact with the water company and that, and so it is, it is the design process that we have to go through.
Right, yeah.
So this preliminary that we passed, you know, we thought of all those aspects, and from now on, we have to get on board, you know, to make sure that we can use those.
Excellent, great.
Yeah, just a question on the solar panels. Are they, like, some solar panels are, like, really ugly. Are they going to be?
These are beautiful, these are very fashionable.
Okay, so I want to make sure, because.
Pickleball court.
You're funny, because I, I mean, I really like the design in the building, but sometimes those solar panels just, like, ruin the whole look.
Oh, you wouldn't see the solar panels?
Okay, awesome. Love, great answer, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
And my quick comments, also, we'll build on my colleagues. I think this revisions have led us to a very desirable project, so my compliments to the applicant and to the staff. And I also think that in the future, this, this keeps popping up, Commissioner Ruiz's concern about questions from the public on, we're in a drought and yet we're approving projects that use water, and, and the explanation is greatly appreciated. That is a responsibility of Rancho California Water District here in the town to state that whether they have enough water to provide service or not, and if they say they do, then the Planning Commission really doesn't have much option other than to adopt it, so just wanted to say that, so anyhow.
Can I just add?
Yes, Mr. Hegel.
This is going to use reclaimed water, which comes from Eastern Municipal Water District. I talked to a representative there, and, you know, they're really pushing to go wider with the reclaimed water. There's, there is a pretty good supply of reclaimed water, so, which is good.
It's important for us to understand, and it's important for the public to understand and hear the reasoning also, so we're glad, we're glad that we're able to provide that explanation. So with that, any, anybody care to comment on it and make a, make a motion or approve it?
I'll, I'll move the item.
And I will second it.
Okay, then, motion's been made by Commissioner Hegel and seconded by Commissioner Hegel. I mean, Commissioner Turley Trejo. It's been a long day, folks, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's a four to zero vote on that one, so bear with me, I'll, I'll get my act together. Item number four, planning application number PA20-1323, a general plan amendment to amend the underlying general plan land use designation of the project site from professional office to medium-density residential. PA2020-1324, a plan development overlay amendment for PDO-5. PA20-1325, a development plan for a one hundred and thirty-four unit apartment community built on seven point six zero acres. And PA20-1326, a tentative tract map, TTM38043, to combine eight existing contiguous parcels into a single parcel. The project is located on the south side of Rancho California Road, approximately one hundred and fifty feet west of Cosmic Drive. Mr. Scott Cooper will be preventing, presenting a staff report. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and Planning Commissioners. As you stated, this is PA20-1323, 1324, 1325, and 1326, which is part of the rendezvous Phase Two project. So project description, four different planning applications, the development plan for the one hundred and thirty-four multifamily units, a tentative tract map, the general plan amendment to change from professional office to medium-density residential, the plan development overlay amendment to allow for the multifamily residential development. Little bit of background and history on the project. So way back in 2002, the Temecula Village Plan Development Overlay was approved by the city council. That allowed for residential in Phase One, which is currently constructed, and commercial and office in Phase Two. In 2016, the applicant submitted two projects, a residential and a commercial, for review by staff. 2017, the applicant withdrew the commercial project. There was an anchor tenant who was smart and final that pulled out of the project, and the other tenants, there was some office buildings, a gas station, they soon followed. Then, at the end of 2017- Then at the end of 2017, the residential project, which is Phase One, was approved by the planning commission. The project location is located on the south side of Rancho California Road, approximately 150 feet west of Cosmic Drive. This is Phase One, which on this picture is under construction, but it's currently fully occupied and constructed. And then Phase Two is on the lower half of the project site. So as stated, it is located in the existing Temecula Village Plan Development Overlay, 7.60 acres, 134 multifamily units. Of those, 56 are one-bedroom units, 651 square feet to 779 square feet, 42 two-bedroom units, 1163 to 1257 square feet, and 36 three-bedroom units, which are 1341 square feet to 1431 square feet. The amenities for the Phase Two include a pool and spa area, which has an outdoor kitchen, fireplace, bike racks, a tot lot, exercise room, and an outdoor turf area. Terms of parking, 280 parking spaces are required by the development code and 280 spaces are proposed. Here is the site plan. You have the project entrance, the main project entrance, this is also used by Phase One, it's completely constructed. You've seen the monument signs and the, the gates out there, so this is how you'd be getting to gate Phase One and Phase Two. And then this is the amenity area. And show you a little, the overall site plan again. So Phase One on the upper site and then Phase Two on the lower site. A blow up of the amenity areas. Again, it's the pool area, pool and spa, obviously in the pool area, exercise room, barbecue area, bike racks, and tot lot. So we have the elevations. Not going to talk too much of the elevations because fortunately, out there, as you know, the project is built, so we get pictures of the actual project. So Phase Two is going to look exactly like Phase One. So if you've been out there, you've seen these buildings, they look amazing, my opinion, staff's opinion, they're the best looking apartments in the city. They just look amazing out there. So this is what the project will look like, exactly like Phase One. Terms of landscaping, there is 56% of the landscaping for the entire project, and by the entire project, we mean both Phase One and Phase Two, which is greater than the 25% minimum required in the medium density zone. Some of that landscaping is the coastal live oak, rock rose, red yucca, star jasmine, and the skyrocket juniper. So moving on to the general plan amendment, there is the change in the general plan land use from the professional office to the medium density residential. And highlighted there in the red shows the PO, which is crossed out in the purple, so that will flip to the orange color, which is the medium density residential. Terms of the plan development overlay amendment, again, it was originally approved in 2002 and this amendment proposes, among other things, but these are the main things, to add language specific for multifamily housing, which on the Phase Two, the lower site, because that was all office and commercial, so there was never regulations for that allowance. Change in the name of the Temecula Village Plan Development Overlay to the rendezvous Plan Development Overlay. Reducing the number of planning areas from three to two and renaming them from sub-area A, B, and/or C to upper site, which is the Phase One, and lower site, which is Phase Two. Increasing the number of allowed residential units from 160 to 294 to account for the already constructed Phase One, which is 160 units, and the proposed Phase Two, which is 134 units before you tonight. Removing the development standards and desired guidelines that pertain to commercial or office development, since that development's no longer allowed within the plan development overlay. Limiting the height of structures along the eastern setback adjacent to the single-family residential development to 16 feet. So if you have the, the single-family development, obviously you don't want a 40-foot apartment building right next to you. So that's where garages are located. Removing an access point to the proposed, to the project site from Rancho California Road. Back when it was the commercial, there was actually two entrances off of Rancho California Road, so now it's eliminated, just the one main entrance to get to Phase One and then up to Phase Two. And removing the signage program from the PDO as it doesn't pertain to multifamily development. The tentative tract map, it is consolidating the eight existing contiguous parcels into one single parcel. So currently out there right now, you have seven parcels on the lower site and one on the upper site. They'll all can become one parcel, it's one owner, so it's better to be a one parcel. Community-wide extraordinary public benefit, this commission has heard about this quite often lately with all the harvesting and development. So on March 21st of 2000, the city council adopted the Growth Action Management Plan. The Growth Action Plan applies when projects involve land use changes, including general plan amendments. The community-wide public benefit for this project, as determined by the city council infill land use subcommittee, is a $500,000 payment to the city. This payment will be used by the city of Temecula for citywide projects that benefit the community. Moving on to the fiscal impact analysis, again, something we've talked about a lot recently. The city's fiscal policies require that a fiscal impact analysis, or FIA, be completed for any development that proposes an increase in residential density from what is currently allowed in the general plan. The FIA evaluated the recurring general plan revenues and expenditures generated by the project by estimating the fiscal impact on the general fund resulting from the development of the project over a 20-year time period. The FIA did find that the project would result in a city services deficit and the FIA will be used in the creation of a funding mechanism to pay the city as mitigation for the city services deficit. There was one community meeting that was held for this project. It was on October 20th of 2020. It was organized by the applicant as a virtual community meeting via Zoom that was attended by staff and five residents. There was a web link and a call-in option that were provided to the surrounding residents and neighbors within a 600-foot radius of the project. And there were no questions, comments, or concerns raised by any of the residents. This project has gone to the infill land use city council subcommittee several times over the years. May 24th of 2018, the owner of the project presented the, presented the project to the subcommittee, who at that time was Commissioner Carmarchero and Commissioner Nigar. No issues were raised at that meeting and the community benefit was discussed. September 22nd of 2020, staff presented the project to the subcommittee, it was Commissioner Ron and former Commissioner Nigar at that time. Again, no issues were raised and the community benefit was discussed at that meeting. And then finally, on May 26th of this year, it was presented to the subcommittee, who is Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Stewart. No issues were raised and the community benefit and the fiscal impact impact were discussed. We do have one condition of approval revision, long condition, but just one little revision. So COA number 20 for PA 20-1325, which is for the development plan. It's like I said, long condition, not going to read it all. If you look about halfway down the, down the page, we are striking of the previous year's payment from the condition of approval. Rest of the condition of approval remains the same. Terms of environmental determination, based on an initial study, it was determined the proposed project could not have an significant impact on the environment, therefore a negative declaration was prepared. With that, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the proposed planning commission resolutions recommending the city council approval of the project. That concludes my report. I'm here for answers. We have our fiscal consultant is here, environmental consultant is here, the applicant is here, the owner is here, the architect is here, everyone is here.
And, and before we get started, if we could just note for the record that we did receive a public comment by email that was distributed to the planning commission. It is a letter dated July 19, 2022, from Mitchell Si, and you've all been provided copies of that letter.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. Just one quick correction in your presentation, they were city, city council members, not commissioners. We don't want to make sure we get that wrong, so anyhow, it can easily, easily be made. Questions of staff? I'll start here on my left with Commissioner Hagel.
Okay, just one question. If you could bring up the slide on the, the plants and all of that, the, the houses on the right-hand side of this, there is plants that are in between the houses and the, the, I gather, that's a, is that a parking structure? Is that what?
Those are the garages.
Those are the garages. What kind of plants are planned for there?
Those will be larger trees.
Okay.
To help, again, that's where we, I was talking about the 16-foot height limit.
Right, okay.
So those garages have the 16-foot height limit to act as a buffer between the single-family residents and the proposed multifamily.
Okay, and then those, that'll all be trees then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question, good, good one. Okay, Commissioner Turley Trail.
Okay, couple of questions. I'm glad we're on this slide. So this, that's the entry right there, obviously goes up to the first level or the first, not level.
Phase One.
Phase One, that's what I'm looking for. Okay, so then on the, where is the major entry monument going to be? It's already there.
It's existing.
Okay, it's already there.
So the entire project's called rendezvous, it was just broken into Phase One, which is development, Phase Two.
Okay, and it's already there. That's right. Okay, that was it.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yeah, and just one question. It actually comes from the email that was received and there was a comment about preparation of an EIR. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
I'll actually defer to our, our environmental consultant to address that.
Perfect.
Excuse me. Counselors, is this considered a staff question or should I have the public hearing open?
We can just go ahead and open it and leave it open until deliberations.
Public hearing is now open.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Eric Ruby with the Center Environmental. We are the city's environmental consultant on this project. And actually, the public comment period was closed on the negative declaration a little over a year ago. And that letter was just received today and it's a rather lengthy letter, so we haven't had a, a lot of time to digest it. But in terms of the question regarding an environmental impact report, based on the analysis that we included in the initial study and the technical supporting documents that supported that, there was no finding at all for an environmental impact report. All impacts were reduced, less than significant, and no mitigation measures were even required to get there.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Scott, could you go back to the site plan slide? Just to the upper right of the project entrance, I assume that's a bus, bus stop?
Correct, that was installed as part of Phase One.
Has RTA indicated whether that will be utilized or not? That'll, I think that's the third bus stop within almost a block, which is fine, but I'm just, it's just unusual, that's all. Okay.
I can answer that one. So we were, we've been in contact with RTA around various bus stops and what they've been doing is they have been documenting ridership. So they've been tracking all the riders and then if this is deemed one that has enough traffic, then they'll put a bus shelter and get everything in there. But at this time, they're just evaluating ridership right now.
Perfect. Just wanted to, wanted to know, they're pretty close, so that's great. Nothing wrong with that. Okay. Yeah. We'd like to have the applicant step up, please, and say a few words and answer any questions we may have.
Good evening, Chairman Watson, commissioners, city staff. My name is Andrew Dixon. I'm the president of Pacific West Development. We represent the owners, the applicant on this project. The owner, M.J. Weiner and Bart Buckhalter. M.J. Weiner is here as well, as well as our architects, our civil engineers, landscape architect. First of all, first, the thing I'd like to, to make very clear is how much we've appreciated working with the city. Scott Cooper has been fantastic to work with, very detailed, very good to work with. We've worked with Luke as well and appreciate everyone's efforts to get the project to where it is now. As you know, the first phase of rendezvous, our company, Pacific West Development, was the builder for that. And it was completed in the third quarter, the fourth quarter of 2021. And it is now 98% leased up already. And so that, it shows that in the city, I appreciate the compliment that Scott mentioned on how beautiful the buildings are, but there is a great demand for these buildings as well and these units. They've leased up very rapidly and one of the things that's been a pleasure for us as, as builders, my business partner, Dan Dobron and I, is to, to build for M.J. Weiner and Bart Buckhalter because they really care what their product looks like. They have a tremendous amount of pride in the product that they have. They own multiple apartment communities. But as you, if you've had a chance, I'd encourage you to go up there and walk through those units. They, they really are amazing and it's, it's kind of fun for us to build a project that is that nice. So we are available for any questions. Our project team can answer for you if, if you have any.
I'll start, am I right? Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Hi.
Great, hello.
So I noticed on the units, 56 of them are one-bedroom. So has that been a demand more, for more of the one-bedroom? That's surprising to me, I guess.
It's just a common mix as far as the unit count when you're leasing out at an apartment community like that, to have a good mix of the, the one-bedrooms. And they usually lease up fairly quickly.
Really? Yeah, because there are definitely more of those than the others, so I was just curious about that. And then it's the pickleball question. Where are the pickleball courts and the amenities? I did not see them listed. What the heck?
Well, we're, we're grateful that Margarita Park is right close, that has multiple.
We need to alleviate Margarita Park.
We wish we could have put a pickleball court at, at the site. The site is pretty tight to fit what we were able to fit in. As you know, the upper portion already has a pool, amenities, all of those, and then the lower portion also has all of that as well. Yeah, we would have loved to have a pickleball court.
Yeah, it looks nice. It looks very nice. And I'm looking at the material board. Thank you. It looks very nice. So, yeah, I mean, when we drive by there, it's like, wow, doesn't look like apartment buildings. It looks really nice. So, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Hagel?
Parking, have you had any parking issues up there?
No, we have not.
You have not, okay. That's all I want to know.
I have no questions, Mr. Dixon. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
And I will say, we appreciate the compliments towards staff. We certainly feel the same way. They do an outstanding job and we're very happy every time we hear the people, the applicants that deal with them, they have the same opinion. So thank you very much.
We appreciate that. I'm a local resident here. I live in Temecula. I've lived here for 17 years and, and we appreciate the relationship that we have and it's always nice to, to work well with the city you live in. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Do we have any speakers now?
Yes, we do. We have Alex Madrid, representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters.
Welcome, Mr. Madrid.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. My name's Alex Madrid. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the local area, live and work, recreate in the vicinity of the project. I believe I will be impacted by the environmental impact of this project. The city should be, should require the project to be built utilizing a local skilled and trained workforce. Local hire skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In recent 2020 report titled Putting California on the High Road, a Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030, the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing and diversifying and upscaling California's workforce can positively, positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of a local state certified apprenticeship program or a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollution reduction. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements to private development projects in their cities. Recently, the City of Hayward of Northern California adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into its general plan and municipal codes. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation greenhouse gas impacts by minimizing vehicles miles traveled. The city should prepare an EIR for the project. The IS MND fails to support its finding with substantial evidence. The IS MND fails to support its land use analysis with substantial evidence. The IS MND fails to support its finding in greenhouse gas. finding in greenhouse gas impacts with substantial evidence. The Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan is not a qualified climate action plan or a greenhouse gas reduction plan. The ISMND fails to demonstrate compliance, will, fails to demonstrate compliance will lead to a less-than-significant impact. The ISMND fails to evaluate cumulative project greenhouse gas impact. The ISMND fails to analyze cumulative project air quality impact. The ISMND fails to adequately disclose and now, disclose, analyze the project's significant noise impact. The ISMND fails to adequately analyze hazard and hazardous material impact. The ISMND fails to adequately analyze the project's significant biological impact. The ISMND fails to adequately analyze the project's significant transportation and traffic impact. The project violates the state's planning and zoning laws, as well as the city's general plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid. Next speaker?
We have no other requests to speak.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing.
We may want to see if the applicant wants to have an opportunity to respond to the public comments we just received.
Excellent suggestion. Does the applicant care to respond to that?
I would just invite the environmental consultant to speak to each of those. It's easy to say it doesn't comply with, but maybe explain why it doesn't comply with. I know he's the expert at it. I'd invite him to, to speak to that, if that's okay.
Sure. Probably reiterate, pretty much.
Again, Eric Ruby with Ascend Environmental, the city's environmental consultant. Like I'd previously indicated, the initial study that was prepared for this project includes significance thresholds for each of those environmental factors that are evaluated in the initial study. We did provide substantial evidence for each of those impact analysis in the way of individual technical studies for air quality, greenhouse gases, transportation, phase-one environmental assessment, biological resources, pretty much across the board for all of those, those areas. And when you compare the impacts of the project against the thresholds of significance, none of those impacts rose to the level of significance, and none of those required any mitigation measures, to reduce those to less than significant.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like that's good clarification. Certainly, the, everyone is entitled to agree or disagree, and it wouldn't be the first project where someone has disagreed, or some agency has disagreed with the finding, but we've heard both of those, so. With that, I think I closed it already, but just to make sure we're closing it for good, and discussion. One more question, though. We can entertain this as one motion? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Yeah, I think it looks like a great project, and we'll make it all look finished, right? Right now, we're like, what else is gonna go in there? So, it will look nice and finished, and appreciate the hard work of our staff and applicant, and working together to make a good project the Temecula way, right? So, I think it's great.
Commissioner Ruiz.
I was actually on the same train of thought with completing that area, you know, keeping it uniform and nice, and happy to hear ninety-eight percent occupancy already on, on phase one. You know, housing's been a, a challenge and an issue with inventory, and, you know, bringing units like this and quality units to the city, I think, is, is a good thing.
Mr. Hagel.
Yeah, I'm glad that it has the support of the, of all the neighbors around, and that I think it's a, it's a, the right use of that land. And again, I know it's gonna help relieve some of our housing issues, which seem to continue to grow, so we need to, need to grow the inventory with it, so.
Yeah, and my comments are the same. It's a quality project, has been from the start, and what we've come up with, I think, is, is fantastic, and it's a hundred and thirty-four more units, so we need that desperately in town, and we're glad to have it, so. Anybody?
I would like to move approval on PA twenty dash thirteen twenty-three. Do I need to read them all?
I think you could say that you would move approval of the staff's recommendation on this item with, and if I may, with the amendment to condition of approval twenty for PA twenty dash one three two five, as set forth in the staff presentation.
What she said. Awesome.
The motion is made by Commissioner Turley Trejo. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ruiz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's a four to zero unanimous vote to approve that. Congratulations, thank you, and we look forward to completion of the project. Okay, next item on our agenda is commissioner reports, and I'm mixing up which way I go for commissioners, so they keep them on their toes, and we'll start again on my left with Commissioner Hagel.
I don't have anything. We did have a subcommittee meeting. I know you're not asking yet, but the subcommittee meeting was on this topic, so, that we just covered.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Yes, we have the final Q L M P this Thursday, so we have been given the working draft, so I've been going through that, and I look forward to this last meeting. So this will be it. The party will be over. Wow. And, and then it will be presented to city council, or actually, starting with commissioner, or to the different commissions. When are you starting that, Matt? August?
So, yeah, as you mentioned, tomorrow night is the last Blue Ribbon Committee meeting, and then we'll incorporate any comments that come from the Blue Ribbon Committee, and then we're gonna make the draft document available to the public online, and we'll reach out via social media, get some public involvement, and then in, at the end of August and September, we'll go to all of the commissions.
Okay.
And then, the document is targeted to be brought to the city council on September twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I have really, I've appreciated being a part of the process, and I appreciate all your work on it, Matt, especially. So, it's been, it's been great to have a voice as something so important for our city. So I hope that, you know, all, all of us that have been on there, most of us will be there, right, hopefully, to complete the process with our voices. So, anyway, I've appreciated it.
Thank you. It's been a great process. Each time we work on the document, it gets a little closer, and when we bring it forward to the Planning Commission, it will be a draft document, and if you have input after you review it, that will be, the comments from all of the commissions will be compiled and then presented to the city council on the twenty-seventh, so.
I don't think I've ever seen a master plan have so much input from so many people in the community, so I congratulate you. It's, I think, given the lack of focused media to, to reach out, you've done an incredible job of, of using every single media that you can to get people to participate. So I think that's, you know, that's really wonderful. This really should represent the people of Temecula.
And maybe people in the audience don't know what we're talking about, so I'm gonna clarify. It's Quality of Life Master Plan for the next twenty years for Temecula. So, you don't like it, don't come see me. But, yeah, it's for the next twenty years, so it's kind of a big deal, and we're excited about it. I think it'll be excellent.
We're proud of the work. And I want to publicly thank Commissioner Turley Trejo for representing the Planning Commission. That's a Herculean task, in my view, so I'm, I'm really thankful that she has spent so much time and provided input to that document. Commissioner Ruiz.
Yes, thank you. Just a really quick comment, since we didn't have the meeting a couple of weeks ago. Just want to commend staff and community services for the Fourth of July Parade. It was always nice to kind of get back out and see the community out there, and appreciate the opportunity for Commission to ride in the big convertible wine tour bus. That, that was a pretty cool and nice way to represent and be out with the community. So just want to thank, thank them and recognize them for their efforts. Glad that event is back.
I concur. I was at the parade with Mr. Ruiz and his family, and we've had a thoroughly enjoyable day, and it wasn't too hot, and we tried to avoid being in the sun in that bus. Even though we were told there were gonna be golf carts, but the bus worked out a little better, I think, so. Outstanding event, as usual. The parade is fantastic. Just recently, we've participated in the parades at the request of community services. I really appreciate it, but to see the crowds from the parade is totally different than just seeing them in, you know, when you walk out and stand in the street. Both the Christmas Parade and the Fourth of July Parade, I'm just blown away by the numbers of people. Everybody waving at you, too. I almost got carpal tunnel just waving back, so. What an outstanding day, and it just represents Temecula so well. So, I just had a great day, too. So, congratulations to community services, as usual. They did a fantastic job with a very difficult task. Okay, commission subcommittee reports. We, we had a meeting today, the subcommittee on Old Town, and there will be some revisions coming forward to amend the Old Town specific plan, and it's primarily to plug up some loopholes or things that may have been overlooked, and also to provide more, a higher level of consistency with some of the standards and that type of thing. I won't go into a lot of details, but a lot of, some of the things that we're looking at are building heights, raised porches, parking setbacks, fencing utilities, bed and breakfasts, and, and restaurants. So, they're not hugely different than what we have, but they're just trying to tweak it to make it a more uniform definition of restaurants, and making a more uniform plan. So, I mean, taking part in the origination of that plan, it's nice to see, continues to evolve and respond to changing conditions. So, that was productive, and I think we can look forward to seeing something at a future meeting on that. Next item on our agenda is Community Development Director, Mr. Moreno. Oh, I'm sorry. See, it's not my night. It's just not my night, and.
You skipped me.
I'm not done yet. I did, I, I want to recognize a VIP, a special person in the audience. Councilmember Edwards is here visiting tonight, so we appreciate your attendance. We don't often have people here like that, but we certainly appreciate coming tonight and supporting us in our, in our job. Thank you. Okay, sorry, Mr. Watson, Deputy City Manager and Community Development Director, my boss, Luke Watson.
I just have one thing to update and let you know about, and we've talked about it before, but just want to remind you, August second, nine AM, in the conference center, we're having the first-ever vacant, city-owned vacant lands workshop, that's what we're calling it, where the city council will be having a discussion about, I think we have fourteen on the list, fourteen vacant pieces of property that are owned by the city, and having a visioning session about what the future of those properties could potentially be. So, whether they're going to be sold, or developed into a city facility, or whatever they want to talk about. But I think it's gonna be very interesting. It's gonna be a guided discussion by our friends at MIG, who have done our Quality Life Master Plan meetings, and I think it would be very good for you all to be there, just to hear the conversation, see where the council's going, what they're thinking. Nine AM, nine to noon, on Tuesday, August second, in the conference center. There will be plenty of food provided for breakfast, so don't worry about that, and hope to see you all there. That's it.
Yes, so, one of the major things for this coming week, starting on Monday, are YUNES restriping, reconfiguring to have the two lanes going in the northbound from Santiago to Rancho Vista. That begins on Monday, and it's a quick turnaround. It's gonna be a two-week project, we've been promised, because we want to get it done before school starts. So it'll be complete by August fifth. But for the next couple of weeks, I would really avoid YUNES with what we're gonna be doing, and especially because we have the Rancho Highlands project over there as well. And so that starts on Monday.
Assuming you're letting the public know that that's.
Oh, yeah, full media blitz. We'll make sure everybody knows, but, and we'll have signage and everything. We have two CMS boards out already that are placed there, so if you're going down YUNES, you'll see the notice right now. So that's happening, starting on Monday. Quick turnaround.
Does that include some pavement work, too?
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah, eventually, we have another CIP project that is going to take care of more extensive pavement work, so, but this is, we needed to do an interim project to relieve the congestion going northbound.
Right.
Because, you know, it just backs up.
So this is not that other project?
No, no. This is a little bit of pavement. This is more of a creative striping.
Right.
But we can't sandblast off the striping, and it not, it look right. So we, we have to do a little bit of pavement work, a little bit of slurry. And then, we have, speaking of message boards, you'll notice there's a message board out at Rancho California Road going out to Deleuze. That message board was placed because the county of San Diego closed Sandia Creek Drive, so that people cannot make a cut-through to Fallbrook or to Camp Pendleton. And the reason for that is, is because that stretch of Sandia Creek is actually private. It's the community association down there. So, currently, there's about four thousand to five thousand annual daily traffic that uses it as a cut-through, and so it's the, as a part of their conditions of approval, because that association requested an application through the county to close that. So because of their, their conditions of approval state that they must work with us to have noticing, so that sign will be up for ten days.
If you do want to go through there, you can get a pass. You can pay for a pass.
I, I don't know about that. I don't, yeah, I think, but the association is pretty adamant about keeping traffic down.
Yeah.
So, that's happening. Next council meeting.
Wait, sorry, question on that. So where are people rerouting that? I mean, where are they?
They, they have to come back.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll be fielding any calls in Public Works and referring them to the county of San Diego. That was not our choice. So, then we have, next council meeting, we are going to be going to city council to request authorization to solicit bids for the French Valley Parkway, phase two. So that's big, very big. And then also, another interesting project is Rainbow Canyon. We had always slated to, we were always slated to do that as a CIP project, at least Rainbow Canyon, which is in really bad shape, from Temecula Creek Inn to the city limits. And recently, we received a notice from the county of Riverside that they're doing, they're actually starting construction on city limits through the county line. We were a little bit bummed, because we wanted to piggyback. It would have been nice if they included our portion and maybe do some type of agreement, but they gave us no notice. And so, that project will be starting, so if you get any calls, anybody's inquiring, why, why do you guys just pave up to the city limits? Why didn't you do everything? You know, you might get some of those comments, but that's the reason for that. Let's see, Meadowview, starting the ARAM project. That's starting in a couple of weeks, and that's resurfacing the streets in Meadowview, and we're doing slurry project in Paloma del Sol and Paseo del Sol. All the residential streets are slurry, getting slurried, and.
Are you doing ARAM on the main road through Paloma del Sol?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
No, yeah, we're doing that, too.
Okay.
I know, we had some homeowners from Meadowview that have come to several meetings, so they are gonna be like cheering and being so happy.
Yeah, because we had already done the loop before, and now we're doing all the side streets. Yeah. And then, you received a staff report tonight on the Mary Phillips that, you know, area that, yeah. But we, we're starting on the regular CIP project for Mary Phillips Center, so that's gonna be a renovation to the interior and exterior, some more minor on the interior, but definitely the exterior. Just want to let you know that will be closed starting in October, and closed probably until the spring, about March timeframe. So, it'll be closed during that time.
The center itself?
Yes, the entire center. And then, programs will be over at the CTC. Over at the theater area, they're moving some programs over there. And then lastly, the CRC, same thing, at Ronald Reagan. That's being shut down as well, same timeframe, October to March, and so that will be down for renovation as well.
But not the pool?
Not the pool. The pool is actually, they're bringing in modulators to act as locker rooms and restrooms, so you're gonna see those brought in in order to support the pool.
And, and not field closures either, right? During that time?
No, no field closures. Just, just the main. No, no field closures, just the main CRC. Those are all of Pat Thomas's Public Works Director reports. There you go.
There's one more, unless you missed it. Was that the, did you mention the new bathroom facility at Ronald Reagan Sports Park?
Oh, yeah, that'll be part of it.
Modular?
Yeah.
So it's out there now?
Yeah.
If you keep you drive by, the old, it was torn down, and now it's not finished, but they brought in the modular, craned it in, and now they're going to be, you know, next 30 to 60 days, finishing the flatwork and everything around it. But you'll see, it's out there. In the location where the old one was.
Yeah.
Right there at the ball fields.
Yeah, it's one of those modulators that comes fully plumbed, ready to go. All you have to do is make the field connections. So it's specked out that way and approved that way.
Okay. And I'm not quite sure who to compliment on this one, but I think it's Public Works, but I just wanted to comment on the new signs on parking availability in the garages and the parking lots. That is just a tremendous help, and I think it's going to make a huge difference with parking down here. So I think Public Works deserves a big pat on the back for that.
It was a joint effort, yeah. Planning was involved, everyone was involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, to come up with some type of sign program to help people, get people to know where the spaces are at, you know.
It's such a good plan. It's great. Okay, that covers everything, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting on August 3rd.